I would like to welcome you to our holiday program. We are going to be entertained thoroughly tonight by the Slidell High School Choir under the direction of Ms. Melanie St. Seer. Please welcome Slidell High School.
Hi, good evening again. We're going to start tonight's concert with a longstanding Slidell High tradition of the Russell song.
Here we come, oh waltzling among the leaves so green. Here we come, oh wandering so fair to be seen. Love and joy come to you and to you your waltz will do. And God bless you and send you a happy new year. And God send you a happy new year. We on our daily beggars have begged from door to door. But we are lords and ladies come from a distant shore. Love and joy come to you and to you your waltz will do. And God bless you and send you a happy new year. And God send you a happy new year. Bring us out a table and spread it with the cloth. Bring us some fine cheese and some of your Christmas loaf. Love and joy come to you and to you your waltz will do. And God bless you and send you a happy new year. And God send you a happy new year. God bless the master of this house like what a mistress do. And all the other guests who make them round the table go. Love and joy come to you and to you your waltz will do. And God bless you and send you a happy new year. And God send you a happy new year.
Our next selection is going to feature a small group of singers, the Slidell High School Small Vocal Ensemble. Their first piece is "Please Come Home for Christmas," featuring a solo by Cara Dufo, who's a junior at Slidell High School.
Bells will be ringing, the sad, sad news. Oh, what a Christmas to have the blues. My baby's gone and I have no friends to wish me greetings once again. Pies will be singing, sad and sad. Christmas carols by candlelight. Please come home for Christmas. Please come home for Christmas. If not for Christmas, by New Year's night. Friends and relations and allegations. Shore as the stars shine above. But this is Christmas, Christmas my dear. The time of year to be with the one who loves. So won't you tell me you'll never more roam. Christmas and New Year. We'll find your home. There'll be no more sorrow, no grief and no pain. And I'll be happy once again. Baby, please come home. There'll be no more sorrow, no grief and no pain. And I'll be happy once again. There'll be no more sorrow, no grief and no pain. And I'll be happy once again. Please come home for Christmas.
The Small Vocal Ensemble is going to continue tonight's concert with a really fun arrangement of "What Christmas Means to Me."
Christmas means to me my love. Like I never dreamed. Oh, oh, oh. All these things are more than just... That's what Christmas means to me my love. I feel like running wild, like an ancient little child. He greets you with a mistletoe. Wish you one and that's a more. Wish you a merry Christmas, baby. And touch happiness in the coming years. Oh, baby, let's just go home to daddy. Night and day, little tree with angel hair. Daydreaming like, all asleep and wake up, it's just a morning. All these things are more than just... Lots of ice and snow, water singing carols, right outside my door. Christmas means to me my love. Christmas means to me my love. My love.
We're going to continue with our large group, the full choir, with a piece called "Celtic Christmas," featuring a solo by freshman Megan Trumay.
Snuggle softly, safe and warm. Mother gently watches, are you nestled in her loving arms? Good evening, Lord, have mercy. Bless your heart and your love. She's a baby, he's a son, but you're a child in love. Good evening, Lord, have mercy. Good evening, Lord, this Christmas time, until you were held and married mine. For hard good God, the cross has died. In sending his beloved son. With merry holy he should pray. The manger in the grace will stay. In that the hand of the Lord had borne. There was a blessing, Messiah born. The manger in the grace will stay. In that the hand of the Lord had borne. There was a blessing, Messiah born. There was a blessing, Messiah.
Our next piece is a really fun arrangement of "Go Tell It on the Mountain," that was clearly their favorite that we've been working on in class. And this piece features a solo by junior Maurice Boutin.
Go tell it on the mountain, over the hills and everywhere. Go tell it on the mountain that Jesus Christ is born.
Go tell it on the mountain, over the hills and everywhere. Go tell it on the mountain that Jesus Christ is born. When I was a singer, I stopped on night and day. I asked the Lord to help me, and he showed me the way. So I went, go. Go tell it on the mountain. Go tell it on the mountain, everywhere. Go tell it on the mountain. Go tell it that Jesus Christ is born. No one tell it now, no one tell it now.
Shepherds kept a watch in a silent flash by night. We go throughout the heavens, there's sure no holding on.
So I went, so I went, go tell it on the mountain, over the hills and everywhere. Go tell it on the mountain that Jesus Christ is born. Go tell it on the mountain, over the hills and everywhere. Go tell it on the mountain that Jesus Christ is born. Go tell it on the mountain, over the hills and everywhere. Go tell it on the mountain that Jesus Christ is born. That Jesus Christ is born. Go and tell it now, go and tell it now, Jesus Christ is born.
We have one more selection for you tonight, which is another longstanding Slidell High tradition of ending our Christmas concert every year with Handel's "Hallelujah Chorus."
Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. For the Lord God who blessed and trained. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. For the Lord God who blessed and trained. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, who blessed and trained. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. And he is the master of this world. This is begun. For he is above all earth, and all is Christ, and all is Christ.
And he shall reign forever and ever. 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 King of kings and lord of lords. Hallelujah, hallelujah. King of kings and lord of lords. King of kings and lord of lords. He shall reign, and he shall reign, and he shall reign forever and ever. King of kings. Forever and ever. And lord of lords. Hallelujah, hallelujah. And he shall reign forever and ever. King of kings and lord of lords. King of kings and lord of lords. And he shall reign forever and ever. King of kings and lord of lords. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah.
You know, for over 20 years for me, the Slidell High School Christmas program has been a part of my Christmas celebration, and I'm extremely proud of them. I'm also very proud of Melanie, who is a graduate of Slidell High School. She was actually a student at Slidell High when I was there, and I'm very proud of her. And I also am very proud, of course, of our principal at Slidell High School, Mr. Percy, Billy Percy. I see as well.
Between the students singing and the message that we got just now, it really gives us a very good feeling about our future and the students here in St. Tammany Parish at this Christmas time of the year. Thank you for coming to the program. We're going to ask Mr. Percy and Mr. Foles to please come up with the group right here for a group picture. And the rest of you, we'll see you at the board meeting at 7 o'clock.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Ms. Weathers, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Hines.
Here.
Mr. Henigan.
Here.
Mr. Garman.
Here.
Mr. Lue.
Here.
Mr. Harrell.
Here.
Mrs. Tipton.
Here.
Mr. Jeter.
Here.
Mrs. Seeley.
Here.
Mrs. Muller.
Present.
Mr. Bentoncourt.
Here.
Mr. Waller.
Here.
Mr. Payne.
Here.
Mr. Lamar.
Here.
Mr. Alfred.
Here.
Mrs. Spelseria.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the invocation and pledge led by Mr. Alfred.
Dear Heavenly Father, please bless the family of Cheryl Harrellby and the Isaacs family during their time. Also, we'd like to bless each and every student, each and every staff worker, each and every teacher, each and every illustrator, so that they may have a blessed and wonderful Christmas. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance in the name of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. We have recognition of visitors. Mr. Lue.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. I have invited Coach Greg Salter from... Oh, leaned my tie on there and it started playing. I tried to say that to the end, but he jumped the gun on me there. Coach Salter, will you come up to the podium, please? So, get quieted now. It keeps going.
Way to the better, you're running out.
Have you ever been introduced with Christmas music before? Well, we feel like it's Christmas with the way he's done with the program, so that's wonderful. Yeah, great. Coach, I wanted to invite you here tonight. We are so proud of the efforts you have put forth at Covenant High School this year. Your work ethic this summer and this football season and with your staff has just been tremendous. For us to see Friday night, well over 100 former players come out there in the freezing weather to support the Lions and Chairman Maui coming out of the dressing room, just brought back some good old memories, and it was just fantastic to see and be able to have such a tremendous semester at Covenant High School. Your players have brought together this community in just no way that we can explain. They're just constantly talking, talking, talking again, like we used to right now on the all the windows of the businesses and so forth, and it's just been a tremendous semester, and I wanted to have you here to personally thank you along with this board for your efforts this year. Thank you.
Well, I want to say something, but if Coach Salter wants to go ahead and say something first, he can go ahead.
I'm very honored and very humbled to be able to represent not only Covenant High School football, but Covenant High School as a whole. You know, I'm very grateful, you know, I certainly didn't do this on my own, I can promise you that. I'm very fortunate to be surrounded by great people, assistant coaches, great players that, you know, know what it means to be a Covington Lion, an outstanding faculty and administration that have been so supportive. And, you know, the main thing I can tell you is, I can assure you that, you know, though, you know, the community did rally around Covenant football, we hope that they'll continue to rally around Covenant High School, because I promise you, there's a lot more going on at Covenant High School in a positive light than just Covenant football. So I greatly appreciate you inviting me here, and I couldn't be more proud to be a part of Covenant High School and couldn't be more proud of the, our players, in particular our senior class, who, you know, deserve most of the credit for this, but thank you.
Coach. You know, they say behind every good man is a great woman, so Ms. Rosalyn Hanson, our principal at Covington High, if you'd come up, please. If I may, you know, this is the year that we celebrate 100 years at Covington High in our centennial celebration with the culmination of building a tower out there, and Rosalyn was appointed principal during the summer and really took over the reins, and everything else kind of just fell into place. And, you know, athletics is a, has been over the history of Covington High, a big part of our tradition, our character. You know, in the last 50 years, it's been football. Before that was basketball and football, but it's always been a key component of the Covington High community and the successes that we've shared with our students and our parents and our faculty and just everyone that's been involved. So it really brought back a great kindling of spirit, you know, from the times that we've had in the past, over the great coaches that we've had over the years. And I just really think, you know, great things are to come, more great things are to come. So between the two of y'all and everybody else at Covington High with the staff and the students and the community, and our main thing is every child, every day, and it's about academics, about educating our community and our students, and there's nothing more than the real world life at Covington High. And y'all have the, some of the greatest moments, and we got some of the greatest pride that comes out of that. So with that being said, Merry Christmas, enjoy your time off, and get back to work.
That's right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you all for being here this evening. Anyone else have a visitor to recognize? All right, we'll move on to our agenda items. The first one is appropriate minutes from the regular meeting held on November 14, 2013. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes? Moved by Ms. Seeley, a second by Mr. Alfred. Do we have any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Item B is appropriate minutes from the special meeting held on December 5, 2013. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes? Moved by Mr. Bentoncourt, second. Second by Mr. Alfred. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Item C is appropriate retirement resolutions for the following certificated personnel subsequent to November 14, 2013. Anthony J. Esposito, Carolyn Park Middle, 31.59 years, 9.43 years in St. Tammany Parish. Lynn L. Ford, Cypress Cove Elementary, 25.01 years, 20.51 years in St. Tammany Parish. Cheryl H. Taylor, Fountain Blue High, 20.90 years, 17.51 years in St. Tammany Parish. Cynthia S. Tony, Fountain Blue High, 26.51 years, 19.51 years, St. Tammany Parish. Cherie D. Dupuis, Fountain Blue Junior High, 27.77 years, 11.51 years, St. Tammany Parish. Donna D. Oster, Honey Island Elementary, 37.38 years, 19 years, St. Tammany Parish. Kimberly L. Keller, Lee Road Junior High... St. Tammany Parish. Kimberly L. Keller, Lee Road Junior High, 32.51 years, 8.51 years St. Tammany Parish. Judith M. De La Rosa, Madisonville Junior High, 41.81 years, 15.51 years St. Tammany Parish. Mary Z. Gotrow, Mandeville Middle, 40.48 years, 19.51 years St. Tammany Parish. Cynthia A. Sharp, Marigny Elementary, 21.71 years, 20.95 years St. Tammany Parish. Deborah G. Gallagher, Mayfield Elementary, 37.25 years, 23.51 years St. Tammany Parish. Margaret R. Campo, Salmon High, 13.51 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Heidi L. Ray, Chafunkta Middle, 28.08 years, 6.51 years St. Tammany Parish. Do I have a motion to accept the retirement resolutions for these certificated personnel?
Aye.
Motion by Mr. Womack, a second by Ms. Sealy. Do we have any comments from the board? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? So ordered. Mr. Jabia, did you figure out a number of years for us on this?
About 385 years.
Whoa. Thank you very much.
Almost as old as Bill Brady.
Item D is appropriate retirement resolutions for the following non-certificated personnel subsequent to November 14, 2013. Maddie D. Haffey, Abita Springs Elementary, 26.19 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Judy S. Lewis, Abita Springs Elementary, 18.71 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Iris C. Revere, Abita Springs Elementary, 16.51 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Linda C. McMoyn, Alton Elementary, 20.39 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Joanne D. Duncan, Boyett Junior High, 11.84 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Elroy A. Badon Junior, Covington Warehouse, 22.13 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Donald W. Jenkins, Educational Center, 30.51 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Carolyn T. Terrell, Florida Avenue Elementary, 10.21 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Helen G. Galloway, Folsom Junior High, 25.51 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Betty B. Bell, Harrison Curriculum Center, 23.66 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Annie R. Bell, Madisonville Junior High, 19.22 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Sudie S. Campbell, Slidell Pupil Appraisal, 10.73 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Barbara J. Carr, Transportation Center, 28.92 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. John B. Canty III, Transportation Center, 21.86 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Do I hear a motion to accept the retirement resolutions for the non-certificated personnel? We have a motion by Ms. Mullitt, a second by Ms. Bellisaria. Do we have any comments from the board? Do we have any comments from the public? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? So ordered. Mr. Jabia, how many years does...
286.
286.
671 for the people.
Whoa, 671. Lots of experience, and we thank you all for your service to St. Tammany Schools and our children. That brings us to item E on our agenda, election of board officers, and I'm going to turn the chairmanship over to Mr. Foles.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. It is that time of year again where we have our election of board officers, one-year term effective January 1, 2014 through December 31, 2014. We'll start first with the office of president. Do we have any nominations? Mr. Henigan?
Yes, Superintendent Foles, I'd like to move that we close nominations and reelect the entire four officers to one more term.
Okay. I hate making these big decisions here. We'll say a unanimous second. How about that? Mr. Henigan has made a motion with the unanimous second that the four officers for president, vice president, chairperson of Business Affairs Administration, chairperson of Human Resources Education Committee remain as the same as they are this year for the next year, starting on January 1, running through December 31 of 2014 with the unanimous second. Although, comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? So ordered. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I think I can speak for fellow board members that we consider it an honor to represent you on the St. Tammany Parish School Board. St. Tammany Parish has professional, dedicated teachers who come into our classrooms each day, prepared to help our children reach their potential. We have students who come to school excited and ready to learn. Our parents and community are very supportive of our schools, and we know that helps in the success of our school system. Our superintendent, Mr. Foles, his assistant superintendents, Ms. Harrowby and Mr. Jabia, the central office staff work diligently for our students, our teachers, and our parents. It takes everyone, from the teacher, the community, the bus driver, the custodians, to make our school system a success. We are a high-performing school system. We work hard for that success, and we, as a board, commit to keep working to improve. Mr. Womack, would you like to add anything to that?
I think you said it best, Beth. That's the general consensus with all of us. I've said many times before that I know we all feel blessed to be a part of something as great as this school system. We're blessed to be a part of it.
Thank you. Ms. Mullitt?
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Darman?
I would just like to thank everyone for their support, and I'm very humbled for their support as well. So, I appreciate it very much, and everyone, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Thank you all. All right, announcements. We would like to thank the very talented choir from Slidell High School who performed holiday music for us in the atrium before the meeting tonight. They are under the direction of vocal music teacher, Ms. Melanie St. Seer. A special board meeting will be held on Thursday, December 19, at 7:00 PM for the purpose of an expulsion appeal hearing. Schools will close on December 23 through January 3 for the winter Christmas break. Schools will open on Monday, January 6. The board will meet on Thursday, January 9, 2014, at 7:00 PM for the Human Resources, Education, Business Affairs Administrative Committee as a whole meeting. That's all the announcements I have this meeting. Mr. Lamar?
I might have an announcement, too. Bill Brady's not here. You alluded to his ripe old age a while ago, but I see in my packet something from the United Way.
Bill served as our coordinator.
I know, but Bill used to always get up here and tell us how much money everybody got and all that stuff.
We're going to do that at the January meeting.
We're doing that in January. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lamar. Ms. Sealy?
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. First of all, I'd like to welcome my husband, who had walked in during the process of the meeting. For High School, FFA has a product that is a unique product. It is a pork rub, and I'm sharing this with you all because the recipe on this product is their recipe. The company is now using this for the pork rub products, and it is for sale. They have a wonderful meat processing department, and I just wanted to pass that reminder on and tell you all Merry Christmas also. Thank you.
Mr. Foles?
Yes, earlier, well, last week, as it was, we continued our tradition of having elementary students come and decorate the tree, sing in the atrium, and this year's term was Lyon Elementary School, and they paid us a visit, and we have, to close the meeting tonight, we'd like to share with you some photos and music from that visit from Lyon Elementary School. And as a school system and a central office, I know I speak for all of us, we want to thank all the board members for their support throughout this year, wish everyone a very safe and Merry Christmas, and look forward to a even better year as we come back in January and continue, as Ms. Heinz said, to work together for success of this great tradition of this public school system.